But I think they'll be here by the time we get through this.
That's not five minutes.
Good morning, Phil. How are you? My clock says I got a minute.
You're the chairman.
Well, welcome to January 12th Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please stand with me and remain standing as we say the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. Going to deviate just for a few minutes from the printed agenda as this is the last time I will, for a few years, open and close one of these meetings. I'd like to just take a few moments and highlight a few things that has happened over the last year while I've been chairman of the board and actually leading up to that while I was vice chair as well. Everybody knows this has been a difficult year financially, not just for the state of California, but all of the counties in California and the cities as well. So we faced some very difficult decisions and made some tough choices this year as a board, and they were very difficult decisions to make. But I do stand behind the decisions that we did make as a board as we have, I think, a financial promise that we've made to the constituents of the county to make sure the county finances are straight and strong and true. And so I do stand behind all of the decisions that we have made. And we've been able to do that because such incredible staff members. I know we've asked all of our county staff members throughout the county to do more with less, and they've actually been doing that. And it is very much appreciated as we, as a board, see the hard work that they do. I wanted to highlight just one program that started last year that was so successful, and that was brought forward by Michelle Baldwin, our clerk, and that was to have a fee for the assessment of appeals. And so this year, in the assessment of appeals, which is staffed by Juana Bush and Denise Abara, they took in nearly 2,000 applications to have property taxes reduced in the county. And that is such a monumental task, and there were days here towards the deadline where there were literally dozens of people in our foyer waiting to turn that paperwork in. And I watched the manner in which they dealt with the public, which was very professional, very courteous, very kind, as they explained the process that they would have to go through. And I know that type of process happens all over the county every day in every one of our departments. And so I just wanted to highlight that one program, but as a way to mention, this happens everywhere throughout the county, and we do appreciate the employees. A couple of the highlights from this last year. Completed the farmworker museum in Moonee Grove Park, held two events there. One was a centennial celebration of the park itself, and then the other was the grand opening of that museum, which was attended by literally thousands of people. That museum is going to become a point of destination for probably up to 20,000 school-age kids per year to learn about Tulare County farm labor history. So we're very excited to have had partners on that, the Tulare County Office of Education, the Tulare County Historical Society, Edison, Southern California Edison. There were many, many partners that worked with us on that and made that to be such a wonderful project. We also moved the Visalia Tulare Works office this year to North Dinuba Boulevard, which provides better access, more parking, a much nicer facility for folks to go to that need the services of Tulare Works. And we're currently working on the building that we vacated to prepare that for one of our departments to move into. So we've been moving a little bit here and there, moving people around and expanding, trying to expand the service. As we've been very successful in expanding our bus service here in Tulare County because of the Measure R funds that have come to the county for transportation. Also, the Measure R is funding the Loop Bus, which provides rides for youth in the unincorporated areas of the county to take them into youth centers or into cities that have youth centers. Since its inception, we've had nearly 2,000 youth get on that bus, and that's become a very successful program. Last year, Step Up events were held in Visalia, Exeter, Pixley, Dinuba, and Goshen. We had so many partners, there are too numerous to mention. As we plan these events, we have anywhere from 15 to 60 or more planning each event. And so that's become a movement here in Tulare County that the board is very excited about and very proud of. Last year, over 3,000 attendees came to those events. I know it was in the year before, but the Step Up Cutler Erosi Youth Center was opened, and we have youth attending that facility every day, and averaged about 45 kids. And these were kids that were staying on the street when school was out. So we've helped as a board to provide a place for young people to go when their school day is over. And we're currently working on providing youth centers in Ivanhoe, Rich Grove, Goshen, and Pixley. And the board has been glad to work with our redevelopment agency on this, using CDBG monies locating places to put these youth centers and community centers in that will help these unincorporated communities. We're actually, as we speak, actively searching for grant opportunities to expand the Board of Supervisors programs to our youth. The Step Up Service Learning Grants, which were grants awarded to high schools for service learning projects, we'd like to drive those projects down into the junior high level and to expand those from five a year to as many as 20 per year. So we're very excited to be looking for grant funding to do that, as well as the Step Up Youth Grants to nonprofit agencies working with youth. We're literally touching the lives of thousands of kids in this county through the actions of this board, and we all know our future is in our children. And so this board is dedicated to helping the youth of this county. Now, any minute now, Gene Russo is going to give me the five-minute mark.
[laughing]
I've got an eye on him.
[laughing]
So in addition to our wonderful staff, you know, I love coming to work. I come here into this office each day. The people that work here in this office are a pleasure to work with. It is fun to come to work. The attitude with which they attack the tasks that they have to do for the day, the week, the month, the year is exciting, and it's exciting to work in an atmosphere like this. So coming into this office has been a great learning experience for me, seeing how dedicated folks are to their jobs here. I wanted to thank my family. This year would not have been possible without my family. I'm going to read a note here. My son wrote me just a few minutes ago. "My son Matthew is a great worker, and I would not be here without him and his support." Well, he is a great worker, and he has been a big support. We've had a challenging this year, a year this year as a family with health issues and, you know, things like that. And without our family, it would have not have been possible for me to fill the position as chairman of the board. And being the chairman of the board is a large extra responsibility, and I'm very happy to be handing that responsibility over in just a few minutes here. But it has been a great pleasure to serve as chairman of this board. The board, when the board picks a chairman, the board does put a lot of trust in that person. There are day-to-day decisions and activities that need to be done and things that need to be decided, working with the CEO and his staff, giving them direction that is a day-to-day job. And it has been fun. I've gotten to know Gene Russo very well this last year. Kristin Bennett, working closely with them on issues in the county, but it has been a pleasure, even though sometimes they come into the office and they say, "You're not going to believe this," but it's been very pleasurable working with them and getting to know them. So that having been said, I will conclude my remarks by saying thank you for allowing me to be chairman of the board. Even though we've had a trying year, it's been a very productive, very exciting, and very growth-inducing year for myself and my family. So thank you very much. My last official item as chair will be to call on this board for a reorganization, and at this time, we'll accept a nomination for a chairman and vice chairman of this board for 2010.
I'd like to nominate Supervisor Steve Worthley to be the chairman for this next year, and then Supervisor Mike Ennis to be the vice chairman for this next year as well.
Second.
All those in favor, cast your votes. And it is unanimous Supervisor Stephen Worthley is now the chairman of the board, Supervisor Mike Ennis is now the vice chair of the board, and I will gladly hand over the non-glued-down gavel.
Well, Phil, thank you very much to the members of the board for putting their confidence in Mike Ennis and myself as your chairman and vice chairman. It is my privilege to present to you, Phil, this plaque with the, actually, it does come off, so you can still use this, and appreciation for your outstanding leadership as a chairman of our board. And I just want to add, you know, Phil, there was some trepidation with you becoming chairman because having been in the construction industry, we do kind of think of you as Bulldozer Phil. And so, you know, there was some concern that perhaps you might just try to bulldoze your way, you know, as chairman. But I will tell you, you've been a great team player with all of us, and you've done an excellent job. And I know it's been a challenging year for you personally, but you have certainly stepped up and done your job above and beyond your responsibilities as chairman of our board. And I want to personally thank you for your hard work, and especially in regard to the Step Up program. I know you put a lot of extra hours doing that, and we're just looking forward to good results from that being a project which is ongoing. Obviously, it's not a one-time thing. So on behalf of the board of supervisors, Phil.
Thank you very much. Great.
A little different this morning. You might have noticed the young people in our auditorium. I think this may be a new record for numbers of people. Green Wave came in while Phil was making his presentation. But just a little background here, I think another equally unusual thing is that at the dais are three members of the board, actually, four of us, all of us played sports, but three of us are alumni of our, representing the districts that we were the alumnus of many years ago, some of us longer than others. But in the Valley Championship, the three members up here represented, there were competitors. And Mike Ennis played for Porterville High School, and of course, Porterville was in the Valley Championship final against the Dinuba Emperors and had an unfortunate result for Porterville, a good one for Dinuba. Alan Ashida is an alumnus of Strathmore High School. Strathmore won their Valley Championship, Division VI. And of course, I played on a Valley Championship team in 1969 at the Dinuba High School. And so the three of us up here were all involved in the very finals of the Valley Championships for our respective teams. So that was kind of fun for us, and it's fun for us also to be able to recognize two of those teams this morning. Obviously, we have a large crowd, and we have proclamations for each of you. I did want to introduce from the Dinuba Emperors, their head varsity coach, Kevin Shartan. Kevin? And what we're going to have you do is, yeah. And before Kevin speaks, I would like to also introduce, I see the principal of Dinuba High School, Yolanda Valdez back there. Yolanda, please be recognized. The athletic director for Dinuba High School, Martin Tovar is here. I'm not sure if the superintendent, Joe Hernandez, was able to make it. I know he was hoping to get everybody, wasn't sure if he could. I'm going to let Kevin introduce his coaches and team. And what we'd like to do at the end is have all the guys come down here in front, and we'll take a picture with you. We'll crowd together and take a picture together. And I'm just going to give you this stack of proclamations, and we're not going to hand them to you individually. We'll let you take care of that on your bus ride back home to Dinuba. But also, before Kevin speaks, I wanted to say, whatever privilege it was for me to be associated with this team, my wife is the official photographer for the team, and I call the JV football games and then help spot for the varsity teams. And it's been a real privilege for me to watch this team and their development. They've had, it was a challenging year for them, having, I think it's maybe the first time that a Valley Championship team didn't win their league conference. And I think it's a testament to their staying on the course, not giving up, and proceeding onward. But this is another very unusual thing. In our league, there were two Valley Championship teams. Kingsburg went undefeated, and they were the Valley Championship for Division IV, and we were the Valley Champions for Division III. So this is a great group of guys. I wish them well. Football is a great learning experience, I know, for all of you. It will teach you life skills, which will be useful for you for the rest of your lives. And enjoy this moment. And Kevin, I'll let you speak. I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
Got to be able to see. First of all, to the board of supervisors, thank you for having us here. It's a real honor for you to recognize us, so we appreciate that. To all you out there, thank you for your patience and time, and we'll try to get this done, you know, pretty quick. First, I'd like to introduce our principal, Mrs. Yolanda Valdez. Come on down, Yolanda. Like to introduce Martin Tovar, athletic director. Come on down, Martin. They get to put up with a lot, so we have to recognize them. My coaching staff, I'll start off with my offensive line coach, Sal Godoy. Come on down. [applause] My running backs coach, and he also helps coordinate the offense, Ryan Phalen. My defensive line coach, Lucille Guzman. My defensive back coach, Jay Acevedo. My defensive coordinator, Carlos Barajas. One of the most important guys on our sideline, and he rides the bus to keep in order, and you'll know why when you see him, Mr. James Vela, our get-back coach. He's also my personal bodyguard. And the 2009 Valley Champion, Division III Dinuba Emperors. Come on forward, guys. I find it really ironic that the day, that the year that we win a Valley title, that Mr. Worthley takes over as chairman of the board. You know, it's been 36 years since we won a Valley title, and he was on the Valley title team in '69, which was 40 years ago. I think they had leather helmets back then. But it truly is a generation that all the Worthleys have participated in, and we're going to present to the board of supervisors a Division III Valley Championship picture. And to present that, I think it would be also ironic that his son, Andrew, present them with it. So Andrew, why don't you come on up here? I think that'd be a neat thing. Did he make the trip? Andrew? Andrew, would you please prevent? Ah. You can go ahead and hand this off to your father and the board of supervisors, and if you'd like to say anything, now's your time to shine.
Here you go.
I'll use this opportunity to put this in the chairman's office for this year. How's that? We have a proclamation, too. We want to present honoring the Dinuba High School varsity football team. "Our kids just wanted this game. They had their minds made up that they were going to win, and nothing was going to stop them." That's a quote from Dinuba head coach Kevin Shartan at the conclusion of the last game. "Whereas Division III of the California Interscholastic Federation Central Section is comprised of 19 high school teams covering Fresno, Kern, Kings, and Tulare Counties; and whereas on December 11th, 2009, the Dinuba High School varsity football team beat the Porterville High School Panthers," sorry, Mike, "31-21 at Claude Hebert Stadium to claim the 2009 Central Section Division III Valley Championship. And whereas the win ended a 36-year football Valley Championship drought and placed Dinuba as Tulare County's top section champion for the 2009 season; and whereas the Dinuba High School varsity football team has a rich tradition claiming two other Valley Championships in 1969 and '73, now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Tulare County that we do hereby honor the Dinuba varsity football team." It's signed by all of our members. Coach, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
We have proclamations for each of the members. My hand is still sore from signing all the proclamations, but this is for each of the members of the team and all the coaches as well. And we want to be sure you get a good photograph or two before we leave, right?
Thank you for having us here. It's been a great honor, and congratulations to Jeremy Blackwell back there in Strathmore. We probably won't be able to get to see this, we're going to get ran out of here. But last thing I want to say is that, you know, we really enjoyed, it's been a true blessing, and it's been real exciting. I think most of us are floating. I don't think I've seen so many football players smiling so much, you know, after a season, just that satisfaction. And the guys coming back next year, I told them, I said, "You know, I really enjoyed that. I'd like to do it again." So, you know, so hopefully, we'll see you guys very soon. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
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 [laughing] Yeah, looks like it. Oh, wow. Nobody's flipping them?
Okay, and not to be second fiddle by any chance, but at this time, I'd like to turn this part of the presentation over to my colleague, an alumnus of Strathmore High School, Mr. Alan Ashida.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm equally as proud of my alma mater, Strathmore. When I played on the team in 1966, my senior year, I think we had the worst record [laughing] in Strathmore High School history. As you'll notice, that Strathmore is a much smaller school than Dinuba, and when our team comes up here, you'll notice the numbers are quite smaller. My senior year, we had to fold the line in half to practice because we didn't have enough players to run a full two-team scrimmage. We've come a long ways since those days. Strathmore has the honor of becoming a Valley Champion three times in its past, the same as Dinuba. The last time was in 1998. The first time was in 1992. And I graduated, and I was part of the class of 1966. So it took a little while to get to where we're at. We also had an outstanding athlete on the team, Jesse Soria, who ran for over 2,000 yards. So I think that's quite an accomplishment for any high school athlete as a running back. So without further ado, I'm going to have Vice Principal Mike Supoy introduce any staff that is here, and we'd like to hear a couple of words from the coach.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Ashida. Very pleased to be able to be here before the Board of Supervisors. And without ado, Coach Jeremy Blackwell.
It's truly a remarkable time to be in Strathmore, California. I got here 10 years ago, and we put this program in place. We were hoping we could get the kids to buy into it. And this particular class had 20 seniors on it, and they bought in, they put in a lot of time, work, and effort. And there's something very special happening, at least on our side of the county. I don't want to speak ill of anybody else, but something good's happening over there. I mean, athletically, our football team is, you know, we had a remarkable season. We had, our girls tennis team won a Valley Championship. Our district friends in Porterville went to Valley Championship. Good things are happening on our side of the county. We got great kids. You were talking about the children of the future. Well, the future's bright with, at least in Strathmore, California, with great kids that we have. If my guys will come up, please. 20 seniors. We brought these guys together in January of last year, and we decided, we've always had this overriding philosophy, we stole from Pat Hill of Fresno State, we want to be a tough, hard-nosed, aggressive, fundamental football team that plays with fanatical effort for as long as it takes to win. And we added to it this year. We want to be the greatest football team that's ever played in Strathmore. And after the effort that they put forth on December 4th, winning a Valley Championship against Orange Cove, you know, they're in the debate now. They get to argue with the class of '92, they get to argue with the class of '98, you know, look at what we've done. We've got a big Valley Championship ring. And I can't say anything really more about our guys. They're just great kids, and they work so hard, and you guys deserve everything that's coming to you. Your guys' future's bright because you guys have been part of something very special. And I know that me personally, as the football coach, I'm a better person for knowing you guys, and just know that you guys have always been a part of something great. Thank you guys for having us here. And also, I thought it was interesting, the Dinuba- Coach Jeremy Blackwell and to the team. Thank you very much. And this is something you're going to remember the rest of your life and not only you, the community will remember. So congratulations. And a lot of times when you're one of the smallest schools in the Valley, it shows up how big the hearts of all the students we have in Strathmore. So thanks again and we're very proud of you.
Hey, thanks for coming. We really appreciate you being here. And now I see why you won that championship. You've got some big guys on this team. We are going to go into closed session very briefly. We need to take action on the appointment of a new Agricultural Commissioner for Tulare County. We will be gone for all of about thirty seconds. If you will just remain there quietly, we'll be right back. Well, you don't have to be quiet, but we'll be right back.
Mr. Chairman, this is item A on your board's list.
Item A, yes. Close session. Board is back in session. The purpose of our closed session meeting was to have action taken on the appointment of a new Ag Commissioner for Tulare County. I'm very pleased to report out that by unanimous acclamation, Marilyn Kenoshita has been proclaimed our new, elected our new Ag Commissioner for Tulare County. Would you please join me in thanking her and recognizing her? Could you please stand so they can tell who you are? Marilyn, you might want to say, if you want to say a few words, this is your moment. You have other moments, but this is your first.
This is the best of them.
Thank you, sir. Morning Supervisors. I was, am thrilled at the opportunity. I had no idea, growing up in Nebraska, that I would be working with, in one of the most agriculturally significant counties in the nation and the world. And I look forward to every opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Congratulations to you. At this time, we'll take up our public comment period. The purpose of this time is for those who wish to address the board on matters which are not on today's agenda, but within our jurisdiction, are invited to come forward. I have a couple of names, but they actually relate to items which are on the agenda, so you'll have the opportunity when those are called. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this morning? Seeing, hearing, no one, we will close the public comment period and then bring it back to the board for Board of Supervisor Matters. Ennis?
Yes, thank you. Last Monday, a week ago, we had a meeting at Lower Tulie on the Success Dam Remediation Project. It seems like that the approval has been set forward to go ahead and appraise and process and procure the properties. But the only problem is, there's no money. So now that, we're going to have to go back and see if we can get some money appropriated to go ahead and buy the properties below the dam so that we can move forward with this project, hopefully within the next sixteen months. So that's kind of where we are. They've been given the go-ahead to buy the property. The only problem is, we don't have any money. So we'll be working towards that. That'll be on, one of the things on our agenda next month when we go to Washington, DC, will be to contact the Corps of Engineers and to press that issue a little further. Thank you.
Last Friday, the board had the pleasure to go to the groundbreaking of the Ben Maddox one ninety-eight improvement, which anyone who knows coming into Ben Maddox from the east, it is a nightmare to get, to get on to Mineral King. I remember when I was first elected, I had a meeting with the city manager of Visalia and a couple of the council members asking me for their support on this project. And at that period of time, there wasn't any money available to, to do this project. If it was not for Measure R, this project would not have come forward. And we are basically beginning construction now. What's ironic was at that point in time, when we passed Measure R, the city of Visalia voted against supporting Measure R initially. But they did come around at a later date and did end up supporting Measure R. If you've read the newspaper and listened to the radio, I will be leaving the meeting early today. I'll be traveling to Florida to meet with Rail America, who is the owner of the San Joaquin Valley Railroad, which has been subject to a lot of press because of the abandonment, abandonment approval between Strathmore and Joe Vista. Joe Vista is basically the Kern County line. After today, I, we will not be able, just not only me, we will not be able to discuss this issue because we will be, we will probably be entering into a confidentiality agreement to, to see if we can work out something that's suitable for them as the owner and for us in Tulare County. It's been a moving target. It's been a very, very educational experience dealing with the railroads. And the main reason that I'm going back to Florida and the Chairman of the Rail Committee, Tom Sparks, and the Executive Director Ted Smalley from TCAG, is that we have a chance to meet with the upper management of the owners of the railroad line. And we want to see exactly what are their business intentions with this line from, from the Kern County line that stretches all the way through Fresno County and part of Stanislaus and San Joaquin County. So hopefully we'll have something in the near future to report that's very positive for the Central Valley. I want to point out that the rail issue of short-haul rail is not only a Tulare County priority, it is a priority of all eight counties from San Joaquin to Kern County to preserve a short-haul rail alternative in the Central Valley. So it's, this project is a lot more than Tulare County, but because of the abandonment, we are the center of pushing to make sure that this valley-wide rail line stays in place. So to correct something, we are looking at buying the rails, the ballast, and the ties. And we've already had approval to buy the rideaway from Strathmore to Joe Vista. But if we can buy the rail ties and the ballast and the assets for a third of what it would cost us to buy the rideaway, it's only prudent to spend the money to get the most we can for the, well, the most bang for our dollar. As of last night, Farmersville passed the amendment to Rail R to authorize the purchase of those assets. And the action of the board today will put the required, the minimum required approval to amend the Measure R expenditure plan to buy the assets. So that's all I have and I'll be back next week.
Have a safe journey and try to keep warm back there. Mr. Cox?
I've had the mic plenty of today. I just have a few comments to make. First of all, just on the note that the first year on the board was very, very challenging. This next year is also going to be another challenging year, seeing as how the governor has planned to solve the twenty billion dollar deficit that we have over the next eighteen months. So hopefully we will be able to make it through these challenges like we did last year, like Supervisor Cox had mentioned. Last thing was just that this Friday, Mayor Ashley Schwerengen from Fresno is going to be hosting a water bond meeting to go over the specifics as to how the bonding package that was passed in the legislature last year will be spent and how it could affect the Central Valley. So plan to attend that and speak up for our county.
Thank you, Mr. Vandepoel. I thought you might say something about your impending marriage as part of the challenge for the coming year. I just want to say again, thanks to my colleagues for, for their willingness to put me in charge for a year. And it is, as Mr. Cox indicated, a great responsibility. And I think this is going to be a challenging year, just much like last year. And I see our HR Director back there nodding his head, maybe more so. But I do think it's also an opportunity. I will plan on giving a presentation on the state of the county presentation on the twenty-sixth of this month. And frankly, I'm looking forward to this year. I think it will have its challenges, but also with challenge comes opportunities. Also, I was somewhat neglectful of all the goings-on to recognize, failed to recognize my wife and she left just a few minutes ago. I want to get it on the record, she was here and I did acknowledge her. And my son will. And my daughter's still here, Liz. If you would stand up, it's nice to have some of our family here present. At this time, we will take up our consent calendar. And we have some items that need, first, item number thirteen needs to be corrected. The date there, which is the appointment, will, will be a term ending December second of two thousand eleven. Item number twenty-seven, we will take separate action on. And item thirty-eight, we will take separate action on. Are there any other items which members of the board would like to have pulled?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would, you've already pulled item number thirty-eight. I would also like to pull item number forty-one.
Item forty-one, very well. Is there anyone from the, in the meeting today that would like to have any items handled separately? Seeing no one, I will then entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
Motion approved, balance consent calendar.
Motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. And we will now take up item number twenty-seven. Mr. Ennis, did you want to say something?
Yes, I'm going to have to reclusive myself from, from this issue, so I'll be leaving the room.
All right. Entertain a motion on item twenty-seven?
Motion approved, a second.
Motion a second, please cast your vote. Vote is unanimous for and no vote by Mr. Ennis. Mr. Ennis, you may come back, please. Item number thirty-eight, we've asked to have that pulled for separate consideration. And the presentation, will there be anyone presenting it on this item? Morning, Mr. Raper.
Good morning, Chairman Worley, members of the board. What you have before you is a proposed resolution which modifies our processing of special use permits and environmental documents for dairy operations within Tulare County. In the past, RMA, based upon a previous resolution, had been requiring a comprehensive nutrient management plan, a geological hydrological report, and a administrative draft EIR, which we declared as an initial study. Based upon that requirement, a number of dairy operators and, and the process was bogged down because what we were requiring was a comprehensive nutrient management plan and the geo-report at the time of submission of a special use permit application. And therefore, all the applications we got in, they didn't have that, those technical reports. And so therefore, the applications were incomplete. And so what I have requested and am requesting of the board to still require the, the information, but just in the sequence in which it's received and how it's utilized as part of the final decision-making process. I personally believe it will eliminate a catch-22 that we're in. And because many of the complaints and criticisms that RMA had received was, is that we're providing this information already to the state, we don't need it upfront in terms of the application. And so this is an attempt to really correct that process. And I see it as a first step in trying to facilitate and to eliminate the backlog that we have relating to dairy applications. So we have proposed to the board the modification of your previous resolution, two thousand and three, oh-two-five-five, by the adoption of today's resolution, which will authorize us to accept this information during the processing of the application and prior to acting on the use permit.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. Jake, did you run this item through the Ag Advisory Committee?
No, I did not. And I apologize for that. I felt it was very important to get this up to the board, get it implemented. What I will do is personally appear before the Ag Committee and advise them why we did this and why we circumvented their format and their meeting process. The, it's critical, in my view, is when we find ways to help streamline the process, we get it implemented as quickly as possible. And if we have to skip several different committees, I think it's in the best interest of the county to do that. But it's not to say that their role and their advice and their recommendations are not important. But at the same time, you know, my charge to my staff and your charge from the board to me is to help streamline and simplify the processes. And so that's what we are attempting to do. And I will personally follow up with the report and presentation to the Ag Committee on this item.
Okay. Thank you.
Entertain a motion?
With, with, based on the fact that Jake is going to be taking this in front of the Ag Advisory Committee to run it through them and the fact that this is actually going to streamline the process for the individuals who may not serve on the Ag Committee, I think that it is prudent that we do this and I would move approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. And one last item would be item forty-one. You've asked to have that pulled, Mr. Vandepoel?
Yeah, I asked to have item number forty-one pulled. I just wanted to take a quick second just to recognize this program, which is the first time that the state has done this. As we go through this budget crisis, we hear about prison reform, prison reform, prison reform. And what this item actually does is it works to re-educate inmates so that they're better equipped to obtain jobs when they get out of prison. And I think that that's money very well spent. And I know that we're, it's been very easy this past year to hammer the state and criticize the state, but I think we need to give credit where credit is due. I think this is a great program and I look forward to Adam and the Workforce Investment Board in implementing this program. So that's all the comment I wanted to make.
Is that a motion?
With that, I would move approval unless Adam has any comments he'd like to make.
No, I think he summed it up very well.
Thank you. Second.
Motion a second. And, and you said re-educate, in some cases it may be educate. Motion was unanimous. Thank you. At this time, we'll take up our timed item, which is item six, the public hearing. I have a request from Star Watson to, Warson, I'm sorry, to, to address the board. And before staff gives their presentation, I'd like to have his request because our, our intentions are to somewhat modify our proceedings today.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me for interrupting you. I believe Mr. Ennis has a statement he needs to make.
Oh, that's correct. Excuse me.
Yes, I would like to voluntary accuse myself from participation in this matter. The roadway in question lies within my district boundaries and although I sincerely believe I could hear this matter impartially and make a decision based upon the process for the individuals who may not serve on the Ag Committee, I think that it is prudent that we do this, and I would move approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. Vote is unanimous, and one last item would be item 41. You've asked to have that pulled, Mr. Vandepoel?
Yeah, I asked to have item number 41 pulled. I just wanted to take a quick second just to recognize this program, which is the first time that the state has done this. As we go through this budget crisis, we hear about prison reform, prison reform, prison reform, and what this item actually does is it works to re-educate inmates so that they're better equipped to obtain jobs when they get out of prison, and I think that that's money very well spent, and I know that we're, it's been very easy this past year to hammer the state and criticize the state, but I think we need to give credit where credit is due. I think this is a great program, and I look forward to Adam and the Workforce Investment Board in implementing this program. So, that's all the comment I wanted to make.
Is that a motion?
With that, I would move approval unless Adam has any comments he'd like to make.
No, I think he summed it up very well.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion a second, and you said re-educate, in some cases, it may be educate.
Educate, yes.
Motion was unanimous, thank you. At this time, we'll take up our timed item, which is item six, the public hearing. I have a request from Star Watson to, Watson, I'm sorry, to address the board, and before staff gives their presentation, I'd like to have his request, because our intentions are to somewhat modify our proceedings today.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me for interrupting you. I believe Mr. Ennis has a statement he needs to make.
Oh, that's correct, excuse me.
Yes, I would like to voluntary accuse myself from participation in this matter. The roadway in question lies within my district boundaries, and although I sincerely believe I could hear this matter impartially and make a decision based upon the evidence presented before the board of these proceedings, I have had several discussions over the past year or two with the property owner and others in the area regarding this portion of Avenue 108. Consequently, to avoid the impression that I would be biased, the decision made today, I recuse myself from the proceedings in this matter in order to protect the integrity of this board's decision and to reassure the parties that they will receive a fair and impartial hearing. I have not discussed the merits of this matter with any other board members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, based on that, I'm not going to be recusing myself. I would just like to say that I also had spoken with one of the parties involved in this matter, this was a year ago, and just casually bumped into him, and he had mentioned something about it, but I had said that I would be making my decision based on the information presented during today's public hearing, and so, I do not feel that my vote has been jeopardized, and I just wanted to make that disclosure.
Okay, and actually, a decision maybe made a little bit in a later date.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Star Watson. I've represented Lyle Babcock, who is one of the parties in this, one of the property owners, and I'm asking this, this morning, on this request to vacate a county road, to continue the matter so that we might present better our response to the Resource Management Agency's recommendations, based upon a certain APN that happens to be owned by Jack Shannon, based upon research from Chicago Title. We'd like a chance to talk to Mr. Shannon, maybe further address where that property is located, because on a first look at it, it looks like it may or may not really have access. We would request that this item be put over until the first or second week in March, and I only say, I'm only skipping February because I have a lot of commitments that I've, in February. Anyway, so, I'd like to put it off till the first week or two of March, so that we can put on an adequate response to the Resource Management recommendations.
Just from a calendaring standpoint, first week of March, does that work for us?
We have one public hearing for March 2nd, and we have that scheduled for March 9th.
Let's set it for the 2nd, then. This is a public hearing, and my intentions are to allow staff to give an abbreviated presentation in case there's anyone else here that would wish to speak to this matter today, since it is a public hearing. Excuse me? Yes.
Please excuse me.
Okay. Excuse Mr. Sheeda, and of course, the record will reflect also that Mr. Ennis has vacated the dais. Mr. Fussell?
Thank you, Board. Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency. As quickly as I can run through my buys to give the audience a kind of a feel for the project, the request is to vacate a section of Avenue 108 that lies between Road 270 and 272, which is northeast of the community of Terabella, and it was requested by Mr. Babcock, which is an owner of a property that is adjacent to the right-of-way. Here's a quick location map. As you can see, it is northwest of the community of Terabella, and here's a location. One of the things that is sort of missing from this graphic is that, house to work, and there you go. This is the Avenue 272 alignment, and this is the Avenue 270 alignment, which actually does still exist, even though it's not shown on these maps. Just some quick pictures. This is at the west end of 108 looking east. This is at the east end looking west. This is in the middle looking west, and then in the middle of the road looking east up the hill. It was originally dedicated in 1912 by the Deer Creek Heights map. The road is not in the maintained mileage system, however, it does provide county road access to parcels to the east. There has been a parcel map approved for development of a parcel to the east, and so, we concluded that this request would be in violation of the general plan, as we see the road is necessary for present and eventual public use. As I mentioned, there was a parcel map that was approved by the Site Plan Review Committee to create 12 parcels. In addition, it will be offering irrevocable offers of dedication along the 108 alignment and the Road 272 alignment. So, our concern would be that if this road is vacated, then there could be a problem with access. This is the track map that was approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. The connection to Avenue 108 is at this location right here. It butts in at 25 feet wide, and the 108 irrevocable offer of dedication is along this boundary to get to this parcel, and 272 along this boundary to get to these parcels. The rest of the road system then internally is proposed to be a private access easement system, and my understanding is, in addition to access to this property at this location, there is also private access that comes down from the north that approaches the site from this location. A quick aerial, so you can see what it looks like in its developed state, and then the proceedings are being presented under the Streets and Highways Code with the petition filed. The hearing was published and posted pursuant to the Streets and Highways Code. We did find that it was not in conformity with the general plan, and so, we're holding this public hearing on this abandonment. As indicated in the staff report, the staff is recommending denial of this request because of the properties to the east needing access to this road segment.
Thank you, Mr. Fussell. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Those who wish to address the board on this matter may come forward this time and do so. I will just advise you, my intention to request a motion to continue this matter to March 2nd, and the public hearing will remain open, so if you prefer to keep your comments until the March 2nd meeting, you're welcome to do that, but if you wanted to address us this morning, now is your opportunity. Either one of the microphones will work, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Donna Shamley with Roberts. I quit.
It's not an earthquake, you're okay.
With Roberts Engineering. We are the engineer for R7 Enterprises that is doing the parcel map to the east of this abandonment, and when we started the map initially, I did check with Tulare County and was assured that Avenue 108 was a viable access for the property and the parcel map. And we naturally, on behalf of our clients, would like to support the staff's position of denying the abandonment. I have been involved in one abandonment in the past, and it created gunfire once the gates started going up and were being locked. They didn't keep it open for ingress and egress for the other property owners down the road, and so, I'd like to keep this open as a county road, even though it is not maintained. It is in an ag area. It's a viable access for the continued farming of the parcels, and the map we have done is a 20-acre agricultural subdivision, basically under the MAP Act. And so, therefore, on behalf of Roberts Engineering and R7 Enterprises, we hope the board will support staff's position to deny the vacation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's David Roberts. I'm the managing general partner of R7 Enterprises. We've gone through the whole process. We've spent tens of thousands of dollars getting to this point. We've done the public hearings. I'm at a loss as to why this matter can't be solved, and I would really like, I mean, the abandonment of the road doesn't make any sense. It would jeopardize our property, it would jeopardize a neighbor's property, and to continue it on is just a lack of doing the job. I don't understand. It's taken a tremendous amount of time to get to this point. Why, what's the answer for continuing it?
Well, it's because of the request made by legal counsel to do so. It's at the board's prerogative whether or not to accept that request. Normally, we do that when people have a request for extensions of time for additional good reasons why we allow that to happen. It doesn't stop your project from going forward, obviously, because he's asking for a vacation, and right now, the road is in existence, so it doesn't change anything as far as the status quo.
That is also access for us to remove our fruit from the field that's been denied to us, and we would like to get that road back into all-weather condition, which it was originally, and use it for access to the highway system to remove our fruit from the field. There's times when we can't harvest because that road is, when it rains, because that road is not in condition to handle our trucks. I think that's an important matter, which does cause economic injury to us.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I might respond to some of the matters. As you saw in the photographs, the road hasn't been used. It's not being used. It's plowed ground. It also has a gate down at the bottom of it that historically, for over 25 years, Mr. Babcock will tell you, it hasn't, it's been locked, it's been closed, it's been on his property. It's not been used.
Well, gentlemen, the purpose of me today is really not-
Continuing it wouldn't, wouldn't change that, and for 30 days, it's not really going to make that.
I understand this issue's been going around for some time. That's why Mr. Ennis has excused himself, recused himself, is because there have been many efforts to try to mediate some sort of resolution. Obviously, that's not been successful, but our purpose here today is not to engage in such mediation. Our purpose today really is to decide whether or not we're going to have a hearing today or whether it's going to be continued. Anybody else wishing to address the board on this matter? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Day, I'm with Terrible Irrigation District, and we have a pipeline on 270 right at the edge of this, where they're going to vacate the line, and all we want is just to make sure we have, that it's known that we have a pipeline there and that we have access to the pipeline and to maintenance. The rest of it doesn't affect us, but we would just want to make sure we're able to get in and do the work there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll bring it back to the board. We've had a request for continuance.
Mr. Chair, the only way I would support continuing this is if they take that gate down. I've heard about this thing for a year now, it seems like, and I believe we have people being denied access to their property, so I would agree to a continuance if the gate comes down.
No problem, okay, all right.
I will represent to the board that the gate has been opened. It is not a problem, but-
Take them down. Take the gate off the hinges.
Off the hinges. It's a removable gate.
The only way I'll agree to a-
That's fine.
Entertain a motion? Yes, sir.
I am Lyle Babcock. I'm the owner of the property next to it. We have offered Mr. Robertson the county total access to the property through, to haul fruit or anything else with certain restrictions. We have pipelines under that road, so we ask that there be weight restrictions so it wouldn't injure our pipelines. I put that in writing. I've given it to the members of the board and to the county, and have received absolutely no response, except to ignore it. Mr. Roberts came to me about a year ago and said, "Move the gate, I'm going to build a road through there." He was going to build a road, not the county. That was his response, and I just said, "No." That has never, ever been an all-weather road. Never.
All right, thanks, sir. We're not, again, we're not here to discuss those things.
What I'm trying to say is, well, we'll address it next month if we can.
Very good.
Thank you.
Motion?
Well, I do have one question for staff. Britt, if you could comment. As far as the Terabella Irrigation District and access, I believe it's on Road 272, is this avenue the only way to get to that access for that pipeline?
I don't know the answer to that. This is the first that I've heard that Terabella Irrigation District had a facility and was concerned about. I thought I heard him say it was along the 270.
It's on 270.
It's on 270, which is on the west end of, so it's already where 108 would, it still exists on the ground.
Okay, so, in terms of the Terabella Irrigation District, they continue to have, they already currently have access to that pipeline with that gate in place? Okay, so, the gate's on, an issue there, okay. I too think that that, I just can't see denying people access to their property, and I think that it should, I think the gate should come off the hinges as well.
That seems to be acceptable.
And so, I would motion to continue as long as that gate comes down, so.
Second. All right, please cast your votes. Vote is to continue the matter to March 2nd. Public hearing will remain open. Thank you all for being here. I'm sure we'll see you again. Okay, at this time, we will take up our items not timed. Item number 42 is a request from County Council to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance.
Good morning. We do have an interpreter here this morning, if anyone would like this in Spanish.
Buenos dias, si hay alguien aquí presente que necesita la información en español?
There seems no request or no need for it. We will just proceed in English then. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Barbara Grunwald from the County Council's office. Some time ago, your board asked for an ordinance regulating mobile food vendors, and it took us a very long time to get this put together and get back to you, and that was primarily due to legal concerns. As you may recall, there were a number of articles in the paper in around 2007 on efforts by both Los Angeles City and Los Angeles County to add more regulations for mobile food vendors, and the resulting litigation in that county created a lot of uncertainty for others in trying to do a mobile food vendor ordinance. And so, we've had a lot of staff meetings, gone through a lot of drafts of the ordinance, met a number of times with the mobile food vendors, and I'm pleased to report that the almost final version, when we met with the mobile food vendors in December, they pretty much said, "Yeah, we can live with this. We'll be, we'll be okay with it." And I think that is shown by the fact that the few little tweaks, again, that we did after that final meeting and sent out to the vendors who requested to look at it, you know, they have chosen not to, not to come this morning. So, the ordinance is presented in the, is described in the agenda item, and we would ask the board to take the actions requested.
I just want to comment, this has been a long process, but I do think, as you point out, counsel, it's been actually beneficial, because when we started this process, the type of ordinance we were contemplating would have been invalidated by subsequent actions in Southern California legal proceedings, and I think also, we deal, we deal more specifically here now with public safety and away from economic, you know, favoring one party over another. Really, we're focusing on public safety, and I think we're on very solid grounds in that regard, so, are there any other questions?
If I may, the same thing, I appreciate the public safety aspect of this, is keeping the, those who want to have a business there and those who want to use that, it keeps them safe and healthy, so I think it's very good.
Well, and I'd just like to make a comment too, Mr. Chair, that I think the public safety aspect is very important of this ordinance, but I also think it's very important to the health, safety access, or aspect of this ordinance, because one of the major problems that I know in my constituency, and I'm sure throughout the county, one of the problems is the lack of restroom facilities, and the restroom facilities become people's property, and that's inappropriate, and that's also a health issue when it comes time to harvest their crops. And so, I see lots of provisions throughout this ordinance that will deal with the various issues that are raised by a lot of constituents and a lot of residents of our county, so I too think this is a very good. I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with this.
Entertain a motion. Anything else?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion a second, please cast your vote. Vote is unanimous, four to zero. Mr. Sheeda's absence is being noted. And that brings us to item number 43.
I have no PowerPoint presentation. Thank you. Good morning, Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. The item before you this morning is a request for an amendment to the 2006 Half-Cent Transportation Sales Tax Measure Expenditure Plan, commonly referred to as Measure R. This process is winding its way through the eight incorporated cities in the county of Tulare for which there needs to be, for this to proceed, would be approval by the county of Tulare, as well as a majority of the cities representing a majority of the city population in the county. There are five components to this request. The first is a request by the City of Visalia that a Visalia Bike Pedestrian Fund be established for cost savings realized or projected to be realized from any of their nine projects. The City of Visalia may then use the cost savings for other approved City of Visalia bike or ped projects, and in response to that, there's been new language added to the other guidelines, item number 16, under Appendix A in the plan, which is identified in the agenda item, which speaks to that issue. The second request is from the City of Tulare, as they continue to, their effort to implement significant bike improvements in the Santa Fe Bike Corridor. They are looking for some amendments to put some flexibility into the plan, for example, under current bike- For example, under current bike, it's identified as Santa Fe Bike hyphen Lights, and they're looking at using the terminology "trail lights," where it says Santa Fe Bike hyphen Trail Head, they're looking to rename it as Santa Fe Trail Connections. And under the section or discussion of bike arterial crossings, they're looking to change that to bike ped arterial crossings. The third suggested or requested change is the city of Lindsay is continuing their efforts to improve their downtown, and again, they're looking for some flexibility in the plan relative to the transit area. The current plan identifies CNG buses as being two with a $400,000 limit, and they're proposing to just -- to eliminate the number and just reference it as CNG buses. I suspect what's been discovered is you can't buy two CNG buses for $400,000 in today's market. Relative to bike and pedestrian projects, they are looking to shift some money from the ped walkway bike account in Lindsay to their Phase III downtown project, reducing the ped walkway bike line from 3.9 million to 2.8 million, and increasing their Phase III downtown project from 2.8 million to 3.9 million. So that's basically revenue neutral for the city of Lindsay. Item number four is a request to incorporate a provision into the plan to declare an emergency in extremely difficult financial times. And so the proposal is to add language that would state, "In the event of an economic emergency, the authority may waive the maintenance of effort requirements by two-thirds vote. An economic emergency may only be declared for up to one year at a time and must be reauthorized if the emergency continues for more than one year. A fiscal emergency declaration must involve the entire county and cannot be declared for only some or a portion of the jurisdictions." And this relates to the maintenance of effort requirement of the plan, where you cannot supplant what you're already spending on maintenance efforts in your agency with money from Measure R. Measure R is to be in addition to what you're already doing. And then lastly, the rail technical advisory committee and the rail negotiating team is requesting an amendment to provide some flexibility for the potential expenditure of the rail funds. And in -- just, I like to underline change text. Preservation of rail corridors by purchasing existing fixtures includes, but is not limited to railroad ties, ballast, track, and signals are permitted when anticipated commercial operation will result in preservation of the right-of-way. And the other addition is, prior to an agency requesting rail funds from the Transit Bike Environmental Projects Program, a plan must be submitted to demonstrate the economic viability of the rail corridor for which the funding is proposed. Those are the five requested changes to the Measure R expenditure plan, and staff is recommending that the board approve the request.
Are there any questions, staff?
A couple of clarifications. On number four, it says difficult financial times. Do we have a definition of what it's going to take to declare this? And it might be more appropriate to ask Gene this, but what are we looking at to -- you know, what's our quantifier? What do we consider difficult financial times?
No.
I was curious about that myself, not being familiar with the discussions and what brought these amendments forward. To me, we're in difficult financial times.
If our transit funding is -- because I know, I'm pretty sure up until now, our transit funding has not been decreased. Is that correct?
No, not that I'm aware of. I think that maybe the way to answer the question is, is there may be some agencies in the county that are making general fund contributions to their road maintenance program, and in this time where general fund money is short and they want to take that money out of their maintenance program, because they've got this maintenance of effort requirement in Measure R, they are not able to do that. So I don't -- I think right now, from talking with Ted Smalley, you know, who oversees this, in a time where, say, transportation funds themselves are being impacted by the state budget system, they're not seeing that as a maintenance of effort. I think they're seeing it as where there's other incoming money that's used for road maintenance that could be used for another purpose would like to be redirected to those purposes.
My only concern is that it becomes a pot of money to just steal from, to supplant other things you were doing, because, you know, the times are -- financial times are difficult. Well, does that mean we had a 10% decrease? I mean, because when I look at the transit, transit has not been reduced. We know that that's probably coming. You know, I just -- I'm looking for some kind of quantifier. What are -- you know, would -- do we have to declare a fiscal emergency?
Yeah, you have to declare the fiscal emergency, and it would have to be all nine agencies. What the definition of a fiscal emergency is, I don't see it in this text, and I don't have the answer to that question. And I'm assuming by Supervisor Shida leaving the meeting that Ted Smalley has also left the meeting and is not here to answer the question either.
Well, that was my only concern with that one. There's nothing that tells me what we have to do. We could all say, "Okay, we're going to declare a financial emergency. We're going to use the Measure R funds any way we want."
Mr. Chairman, if I might respond, there is a definition of fiscal emergency in the government code. Your board does have the ability to declare it, and you do have some fairly wide discretion to do that, but there are parameters. For example, in the governor's proposed budget, it is proposed that what we now get from gas taxes, the tax would go away and it would be converted to an excise fee. We would not get the money anymore. The state would get to keep all of it. That would clearly fall within the definition of a fiscal emergency, at least for road and transportation purposes. So there is a framework.
I would just try, if I may, to avoid the appearance of being the state. Here's a pot of money. Let's go take it. And that's the state's, you know, mantra. That's what they do. Here's money. Let's just take it, and we'll declare some type of emergency to make it fit our purposes. I just don't want to look like the state in identifying available pots of money.
I don't think the intent of this is to be able to take Measure R money and redirect it to other purposes. The intent of this is that if an agency is making a contribution from the general fund, and that's what it says, allow the suspension of any general fund allocations to Measure R. You may have an agency -- city of Visalia comes to mind from my years there, that makes it -- is able -- has been able to make a general fund contribution to road maintenance. Once this was passed, it, that became the level by which they had to continue to maintain or their maintenance of effort. In today's environment, where general tax -- general fund dollars are declining, it would allow agencies like the city of Visalia, I'm assuming with the concurrence of all the other eight, to be able to not perform that level of maintenance with those general fund dollars and redirect them to other uses. It would not allow the redirection of Measure R money to other uses. That would still have to be used for the purpose of road maintenance or regional project.
I understand. I'm just putting out the word of caution. I'm going to support this. It's just, you know, the word of caution is, it's not a free pot of money to use however you want within, you know, roads or transportation or whatever their needs. I would think there would be some close oversight. Hope there would be some close oversight, how the money's switched around.
If I might just to respond to that, I think I understand your concerns, Mr. Cox. However, I think in this case, we are closer to the people. This has to be done in a public forum, in a local council meeting. People can show up and they can object to it and say, "I don't think that's right. I'd rather keep money in transportation and not go to some other purpose." But it allows really for the ability to prioritize as those local communities think is necessary, and if it turns out that, you know, because, for instance, if they don't have money to pay on roads, they wouldn't be paying money on roads anyway, even though they've been doing it from a budgetary standpoint. They just don't have the funds to do it. So this gives them more flexibility, and I think it's appropriate. And it is a little different, because from the state standpoint, something that happens in Sacramento, which affects all of California, is one thing, but these are things that will happen at a very localized level at the city council meetings, and I think it's an appropriate way for them to deal with these crises. It gives them that much more flexibility, so I would support that.
And I have a question. In terms of item four, as long as this money is going to be spent on roads, Measure R money will be spent on roads under this provision, because I think that's the concern of a lot of my constituents, is that Measure R continues to be changed from what they originally passed it to mean. And I just want to see that this money, although giving them flexibility, giving the city's flexibility, is continued to be spent on roads as it was intended. Roads and, obviously, transit and bike projects from the 14% pot of funds.
This does not change the requirement under Measure R for where the money is to be spent. This only changes, allows, under a fiscal emergency, to lift the maintenance of effort requirement. And again, more applicable where you've got outside sources coming in, maybe general fund, maybe it's redevelopment project area money, you know, I don't know. But doesn't change that what Measure R has to be spent on.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I have one question of counsel. For this item, can we -- do we have to approve all five amendments together, or can they be considered on an individual basis?
Well, there's some dispute amongst the TCAG members about that, I know, because the city of Visalia approved four, but not five, or there's actually some dispute about what actually was approved or not by the city. The matter before you is, as a package. If you wish to make a motion to one and not the other, you could certainly do that. However, it doesn't appear from the language establishing Measure R that it is really possible to do that, to cherry pick this amendment, but not this amendment. And that's actually because this is the way TCAG has brought it forward.
No, there is also, I have a public comment. If there's any other questions, staff?
One last one. I'm going to flop on this and support this, reason being, the last thing that was added that Brett read on number five was the plan must be submitted that demonstrates the economic viability of the rail corridor for which the funding is proposed. I'm going to flip-flop on the position I've taken previously and hope that that includes private investors, because I -- when we come to it, I will never support using government money to buy anything over there. I think it ought to be private money, but because of the way this is written, I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Very good. We have a question or a person, Linda Youngs, who's requested to address this matter. Good morning, ma'am. How are you?
Good morning.
Could you please give us your name and address?
Linda Youngs. And which did you?
Your address, please.
2840 Tyler Avenue, Visalia. And my concern is the funding being used for the railroad. I should have expressed my concerns over this some time ago. However, I'm not adept at public speaking, so you can use that as an indication as how important this issue is to me. I don't believe the government should be owning a railroad. I don't believe my precious tax dollars should be used to purchase a railroad line that private enterprise abandoned because it is not profitable. And I just wanted to express my concerns against the use of the funding for the railroad. And I assume the board has checked into the ownership of the land since sometimes abandoned railroad lines do revert to the original owner, but that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address this matter?
Chairman?
Yes.
Clarify for your board and the members of the public, if your board agrees and approves this matter, and it in fact is approved by relative combination of members of TCAG to go forward, that does not mean that you must use money in that way. It simply means you may.
Allowed to.
That way. That still allows, in the event that there was a proposal to use Measure R money for this, that still allows for public discussion and input and that sort of thing.
Thank you, counsel. Brett, if you have anything else you want to add?
No, I'm just here to answer questions.
Mr. Chair, I do have one comment to justify as to why I'm asking the questions that I've asked and how and why I will be voting the way I'm going to be voting. You know, I would approve four out of the five of these amendments, if you will, but the fifth, to me, I just, I have a really difficult time, even though it is fiscally responsible to get the most bang for your buck, and in the case like Supervisor Shida had mentioned before he left, that this would give us or give TCAG the opportunity to preserve that rail at the lowest cost. I agree with that. However, I don't agree with the amendment of the plan to basically take money that was destined for trails and transit projects to actually be used for the specific purchase of ties, ballast, tracks, and signals. And because of that, I cannot support that, because we are substantially changing the measure that was approved by the public. And so based on amendment number five, I cannot support this whole package, so.
Counsel, let's set for closed session.
We certainly could continue the matter and act for your board's discussion in the closed session. As far as I know, there is no current threat of litigation. I am not aware of any current threat of litigation that would justify your board putting it on today as an urgency item. I do know that TCAG is to meet again on the 25th.
I believe that's correct, yes.
And your board doesn't meet again until the 26th, I think. Do I have that correct?
All right, thank you. All right, this time then, without -- we can have further discussion, but I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I will make the motion with the statement, "No government money." Motion to approve this amendment.
One second. Any further discussion? Cast your votes. Vote passes three to one. Vandepoel voting no, the other remaining voting yes, and Ashida being absent. So this matter is approved, and I would just note to the board that I will be appearing before the city council dinuba tonight as they take up this matter in the absence of Mr. Smalley, just to present it and try to answer questions that they have. There will also be a staff member from TCAG there also as well. All right, at this time, we have items for closed session, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Of your items A through I on your board's closed session agenda, you have already dealt with item A. Items B and F are off agenda. I do not anticipate any announcement.
All right, very good. Thank you all for being here this morning. We will adjourn to closed session at this time.